Bienvenidos, todos, a la reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado de Burlington, el 2 de mayo de 2017. Quiero pedirles que tomemos un momento para silenciar todos los dispositivos electrónicos. Es mi honor, esta noche, dar nuestra invocación. Estamos agradecidos por este día que nos ha sido dado, por sus oportunidades y desafíos. Pedimos fuerza, visión, sabiduría y guía mientras avanzamos. Teniendo siempre en cuenta los valores duraderos de la vida, ejerciendo nuestros esfuerzos en esas áreas y en esas cosas sobre las que las generaciones futuras pueden construir con confianza. Tenemos un número de reconocimientos especiales esta noche. Es nuestro honor tener un invitado honrado con nosotros. Y nos gustaría comenzar invocando al delegado de Soladad. ¿Quieres decir alguna comentario? Puedes ir a la derecha. Nos encantaría invitar al señor Gilberto Hernández Villafuerte.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas noches.
Me siento muy complacido de continuar por tercer administración una hermandad entre dos pueblos.
Estoy muy contenta con la continuidad de una hermandad de tres generaciones entre dos ciudades.
Aunque somos de naciones diferentes, yo creo que compartimos mucho en común.
Aunque pertenecemos a diferentes naciones, creo que tenemos muchas cosas en común.
Y tan es así que he sido acogido junto con mi familia de una manera muy especial.
Y la prueba de eso es que he sido muy bien acogido, yo, mi delegado y mi familia aquí.
Yo creo que esto nos hace crecer como pueblos y poner el ejemplo de que cooperando podemos sacar mayor éxito en nuestros pueblos que gobernamos porque estrecharía más la relación.
Esta es la prueba... Esta es la prueba de que a través de la colaboración las ciudades y la gente podrían estar más cerca.
Encantado de estar aquí con ustedes.
Estoy muy contenta de estar aquí con ustedes.
Muchas gracias.
Es mi honor presentar esta proclamación de la acogida del delegado de la hermana de la ciudad. Mientras que la ciudad de Burlington y la hermana de la ciudad de Burlington firmaron un acuerdo en abril-2014. Mientras que la Cámara de Cuidado de Burlington es honrada de acoger al señor Gilberto Hernández Villafuerte, director de relaciones públicas Miguel Angelo Bustamante Morales y Claudia Lucena Devila Arenas.
La señora de Burlington, la señora de Burlington, me siento honrado de dar la bienvenida al alcalde Gilberto Hernández Villafuerte, al director de relaciones públicas Miguel Angelo Bustamante Morales y a Claudia Lucena Devila Arenas.
Nos sentimos tristes que no pudiera hacerlo. Mientras que la ciudad de Burlington donó dos camiones de bombardeo a la ciudad de Soladad para que implementen sus servicios. Mientras que la ciudad de Soladad ha donado dos hermosas fuentes localizadas en el parque principal de la ciudad de Burlington y la otra en el letrero del museo del niño de la ciudad de Burlington. Mientras que la presencia de estos distintos representantes de la gobierno de Mexico sirve para fortalecer aún más la relación hermanas compartida entre Burlington y Soladad. Mientras que la relación de las ciudades hermanas de Burlington y Soladad es simplemente representativa de la visión de las organizaciones de las ciudades hermanas promoviendo el entendimiento y el acercamiento internacional. Entonces, por culpa del Cámara de Cuidado de Burlington, yo Ian Baltus, alcalde de la ciudad de Burlington, considero una gran honra extender esta proclamación de reconocimiento y apreciación de los delegados visitantes de Soladad en México.
Y a nombre del consejo de la ciudad de Burlington, yo Ian Baltus, alcalde de la ciudad de Burlington, por este medio le rito un homenaje, lo entiendo, lo extiendo como una proclamación y reconocimiento y apreciación para los delegados que nos visitan de Soladad, México.
Nos invitaremos a tu delegado, nos invitaremos al consejo, se adelante.
Que si quieres indicar, delegación.
No todos los días tenemos a uno de nuestros representantes de nuestra hermana ciudad. Estamos muy honrados. El año pasado hemos tenido a ambos alcalde de South Carolina que visitó y ahora el alcalde de Soladad que ha visitado nueve años. Tenemos otra proclamación, me gustaría reconocerlo. ¿Quieres decir alguna palabra?
Alcalde y consejo, apreciamos tu continua apoyo. Es increíble trabajar aquí. He estado aquí cuatro años. Este es mi aniversario de cuatro años, fin de abril. Así que muchas gracias por mi continua formación y tu capacidad de proporcionarnos los recursos que necesitamos para darle un buen servicio a nuestros ciudadanos. Así que muchas gracias.
Es nuestro honor proclamar el 12 de mayo a 19 de 2017 como la semana de la policía nacional. Reconocer la semana de la policía nacional 2017 y honrar el servicio y el sacrificio de esos oficiales de la policía lesionados y matados en la línea de servicio mientras protegen nuestras comunidades y salvaguardan nuestra democracia. Mientras que hay aproximadamente 900,000 oficiales de la policía en comunidades en los Estados Unidos, incluyendo los 137 miembros dedicados al departamento de la policía de Burlington. Mientras que se reportan casi 50,000 asaltos contra oficiales de la policía cada año, resultando en aproximadamente 15,000 heridas. Mientras que desde la primera muerte registrada en 1791, más de 20,000 oficiales de la policía en los Estados Unidos han hecho el último sacrificio y han sido matados en la línea de servicio. Incluyendo 143 oficiales que murieron en 2016 y los 41 que han sido matados hasta ahora en 2017. Mientras que los nombres de estos oficiales publicitarios son engravados en las paredes del Memorial de los Oficiales de la Policía Nacional en Washington, D.C. Y mientras que el servicio y el sacrificio de todos los oficiales matados en la línea de servicio será honrado durante el Memorial de los Oficiales de la Policía Nacional para el 29º anual de candela de luces el viernes del 13 de mayo de 2017. Y mientras que también estamos honrados por la memoria del único oficial de la policía de Burlington matado en la línea de servicio, el oficial Sunny W. Vaughn, de fin de semana, el 7 de diciembre, 1938. Y mientras que el 15 de mayo es designado como Dia de los Oficiales de Paz, en homenaje a todos los oficiales anteriores y a sus familias, la bandera de Estados Unidos debe ser lanzada a la mitad. Por lo tanto, sea resuelto que yo Ian Baltus, alcalde de la ciudad de Burlington, designe formalmente el 12 a 19 de mayo de 2017 como semana de la policía en la ciudad de Burlington y saludo públicamente el servicio de oficiales de la policía en nuestra comunidad y en comunidades en toda la nación. También tenemos una reconocimiento adicional. ¿Es Molly Whitlatch aquí? Estás escondiéndote en la parte de atrás.
Gracias. Cada año la Comisión Histórica de Burlington reconoce las propiedades históricas que han sido restauradas de una manera exemplary. Este premio se llama en memoria de Jay Mini-Tree Pine, quien fue un pionero, él fue miembro y pionero en las primeras esfuerzos de preservación de Burlington. Comenzó una campaña en 1966 para restaurar los lantanos globales en Fountain Place y fue el lampista durante más de 20 años. Este año tenemos dos premios realmente especiales. El primero, y tenemos algunas fotos, creo que podemos hacerlas. El primero es para Brady y Angie Goforth para la restauración de su hogar en 815 West Davis Street. Este hogar está ubicado en la esquina de Atwater y Davis y estaba vacío durante muchos años. The Goforth undertook a massive restoration of the interior and exterior of the house and the garage, including an addition. Y mantuvieron muchos de los detalles originales y traicionaron esta propiedad de vuelta a la vida. Otra nota interesante es que esta propiedad fue reconocida en todo el país por el gobernador McCrory y el secretario Clutz durante su viaje a proyectos exitosos usando los créditos de impuestos de Carolina del Norte. Así que Brady y Angie, por favor, ven y acepten esta placeta y tendremos la real para ti en un par de meses. Bien, nuestro segundo premio va a una propiedad comercial. Estamos honrando a Jerry y George y Jerry Knoll por la restauración del viejo oficio de la usanza de la usanza de la usanza en Glenco, donde operan como un museo de herencia textil. Y específicamente el sótano de la propiedad, que han convertido en un evento y espacio de reuniones llamado Norte de Charleston. Además de solo restaurar la propiedad, los Knolls han salvado y preservado painstakingamente muchos reliquias del propio oficio y de la vida del oficio. Puedes ir al sótano y te mostrarán registros de empleo y registros de negocios y muestras textiles y todo tipo de pequeños detalles que realmente te muestran cómo era trabajar en la usanza. Y tenemos, creo, tal vez una video.
Una video muy corta.
Está una corta video mostrando. Y solo para subrayar que la preservación de propiedades históricas como esta es vital para nuestra comunidad
Como puedes ver, absolutamente. Y como puedes ver, empezamos con un desastre. Y estamos orgullosos de lo que tenemos ahora, muy orgullosos. Pero quiero decirle gracias a algunas personas que realmente nos han ayudado. En primer lugar, el departamento de planificación y inspección, gracias. Y Herb Carmen y su grupo. El dibujo de la imagen tras la imagen que tenía que ser dibujado antes de que pudiera llegar a este desastre al punto que la ciudad podía incluso empezar con él, en cuanto a las inspecciones estuvieran preocupadas. Jim Peacock, un ingeniero electrónico, ahora, estas son personas que dejaron de su trabajo. Y Herman Johnson, quien llevó a cabo cargas de basura de basura de basura de basura de la usanza mecánica de Burlington. Y luego muchos amigos vinieron a nuestra rescate. Cuando empezamos con esto, no estoy segura de cuántos realmente obtuvieron la visión. Pero nos mantuvieron a todos los lados, realmente. Ahora, esto ha sido financiado por no donaciones, pero realmente amigos generosos que nos han apoyado a todos los lados. Y Norte de Charleston, voy a decirte de dónde viene ese Norte de Charleston. Mi esposo George, quien dio cientos de horas de trabajo de habilidad, logrando el lugar al punto que la basura y la almacenación podrían incluso ser considerados. Hicimos un viaje a Charleston porque recordamos las estructuras en Charleston, en el fondo de Charleston y queríamos ver si esto realmente era una cosa realista. Tenemos beamas expuestas, tenemos escaleras bajas, tenemos las arcas, las arcas de madera. Y George dijo en ese momento, hay que tener un nombre llamado Norte de Charleston, lo que nos mantuvo a todos. No solo debido a la apariencia de él, sino Daisy Hope casó a Walter Gary Green, quien era una persona muy prominente en Charleston, y ellos criaron a su familia en Charleston. Walter Green fue abogado en Graham durante años y luego su hermano Holt Green fue un oficial de la OSS y fue matado el 26 de enero de 1945, Segunda Guerra Mundial. Así que como decimos, el museo ahora tiene un lugar hermoso para tener reuniones y un gran área para rentar. Y esto sería como el final de muchas, muchas horas de trabajo en cuanto a todo el museo. Y si no has estado allí, necesitas venir.
Y tu amigo, Argie, David, Nick.
Los armazones son inapropiados, realmente. Los armazones, tantos de ellos. Este es un museo de herencia textual enfocado en Alamance County y más allá. No es todo el museo, es un museo de herencia textual. Y tenemos muchas cosas que están pasando ahora, en cuanto a los textiles, exhibiciones, exhibiciones pasadas. Pero el armazón, tenemos dos archivistas que están absolutamente haciendo trabajo genial en él. Y no puedes creer cuántos primeros negocios de la empresa son representados en los ingresos. No creo que estas personas se hayan arrojado un trozo de papel en este lugar y lo harán.
Es un buen look.
He tenido la oportunidad de visitar y definitivamente me gustaría visitarlo si aún no lo has hecho. Gracias a todos por su compromiso con la historia de nuestra comunidad. Y en este momento el consejo reconoce a nuestro clerk de la ciudad, Rene Ward.
El consejo es muy responsable, quiero recordarte que tuvo que hacer un concurso de eventos y no tuvo que hacer un concurso de eventos. Sí, creo que sí, me gustaría recurrirme a mí mismo en el tema de No Ber.
La continuidad de ese tema, creo que es una palabra.
Así que no hay acciones necesarias. Bien, antes del consejo, los minutos del 3 de abril de 2017, la sesión de trabajo del 18 de abril de 2017, la reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado. ¿Oigo una motion para aprobar los minutos? Todos los que están a favor, por favor, digan aye. Todos los que están en oposición, los minutos han sido aprobados. Antes del consejo es la agenda. ¿Oigo una motion para aprobar la agenda?
Motion para adoptar la agenda escrita.
Todos los que están a favor, por favor, digan aye. Todos los que están en oposición, la agenda ha sido aprobada. Tenemos un elemento en nuestra agenda de consentimiento. Estos elementos son típicamente no controversios. Si alguien tiene preguntas sobre el siguiente elemento, por favor, déjanos saber. Item A, adoptar una resolución y aprobar un acuerdo entre la ciudad de Burlington, Nueva Carolina y el Departamento de Transporte de Carolina del Norte, ITS, y el Sistema de Signales para actualizar el sistema de señal de tráfico computado de Burlington. ¿Oigo una motion para aprobar la agenda de consentimiento? Todos los que están a favor de aprobar la agenda de consentimiento, por favor, digan aye. Todos los que están en oposición, la agenda de consentimiento ha sido aprobada. Tenemos un número de temas de negocio incompleto antes del consejo. Item uno, una audiencia pública ha continuado para que la Cámara de Cuidado considerara una aplicación para rezonar propiedades ubicadas a la izquierda de Brassfield Drive y de Fernway Drive y a la izquierda de Old Glenco Road para el uso de una subdivisión residencial de 172 lotes. Referente a la identificación de impuestos de Alamance County, número 170825 y siendo una porción del lot 140023, este es un appeal continuado del 18 de abril de 2017, reunión de la Cámara de Cuidado. En este momento el consejo reconoce a Amy Nelson.
Gracias y buenas noches, alcalde y consejo. Este elemento ha sido antes de ti, esta es la tercera vez. Venía con la recomendación de personal, ha sido a través de nuestro comité de revisión técnica. Fue negado por la Comisión de Planificación por votación de dos a tres. Y como hemos discutido, ha habido numerosos intercambios, tratando de llegar a una condición donde sea aprobado por el consejo y por el apoyo, ya que es condicional. Y él ha hecho algunos trabajos. Te mostraré. ¿Tienen todas copias del mapa, del plan? Está un poco pequeño aquí en la pantalla, pero intentaré zoomar en algunas de las áreas clave del plan para ti. Solo para revisar, Mr. Wallace está propuesto una conexión aquí a Glen. Y está instalando una curva T aquí para vehículos de la ciudad en Harris. Habrá, lo que el departamento de la policía ha decidido ser una buena conexión aquí a lo largo de la ruta propuesta, que también abrirá un poco de tierra para Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Scott Wallace está aquí para hablar de esto y lo dejaré él revisar las condiciones que ha propuesto. Sí. Lo siento. Él ha propuesto una conexión, además de la conexión a la izquierda, está añadiendo una conexión aquí a Glen, o conectando con Glen. Y ha propuesto una curva T en Harris. Esta conexión que está en Glen ha sido revisada por el personal. El departamento de la policía, como entiendo, está muy cómodo con usar esto como acceso alternativo a la subdivisión y vendrá con fase dos. Oh, no hay, lo siento, no hay curva T aquí en Harris. También las calles han sido devueltas a su anchura original de 31 pies de 29 metros porque esa fue una concesión que el personal había hecho para permitir la conexión en Harris. because that was a concession that staff had made to allow the connection at Harris. But since that is no longer being the connection point, we have requested it to be returned to 31 feet.
What phase are we in now? What phase are we?
This would be the first phase of this extension of the subdivision.
I think the request to do phase two where it is now is for fire access earlier in the project, correct?
Right. This is really just a sketch plan that you're looking at, so it's not completely set. The mailboxes will be arranged according to N C D O T requirements.
Other questions from council? Allow Mr. Wallace to speak.
Mr. Wallace is here.
Welcome back.
Once again, my name is Scott Wallace with Keystone Homes with offices at 3708 Alliance Drive in Greensboro. Thanks for having me back. We've been busy at work since we visited with you several weeks ago. And it has turned out to be a win-win-win solution in our minds. We've been able to, since our last presentation, we went back to the table and worked with the staff several times and hats off to the staff and their professional level of working through a better solution. We also, during this process, we've evolved and met Robin Wintringham, if I've got that name right, with Habitat for Humanity. And it seems that we're going to, we partner with Habitat quite extensively through the years. And this gave us another opportunity where we're going to be able to partner with Habitat here in Alamance County. So, we've also, last week, we visited at Morgantown Church with some neighbors from Morgantown. And I think there's some people here to speak on some of the issues there. What I heard, I can't speak for others, but just blighted homes, some additional traffic, city services such as streetlights and other things would be really helpful in this area. And we genuinely believe that our investment and investment in this area and the growth in this area gets, encourages additional growth and draws more light on this particular area. And hopeful that it will be lifted up to a certain degree and will be an asset and a good neighbor to our surrounding communities. So, like I said, we have, that alternate access from Glen is through a partial that was donated to Habitat for Humanity in the little bit, in the last year or two. And we're going to be able to work with them. And while we're doing that, we're going to create connections, utility connections for several lots there. And so, it's a win-win-win. Pretty much available for any questions. I'm not going to belabor it anymore. And thanks very much for hearing us again.
So, the public hearing has been continued. So, unless there are any questions from council, we can begin accepting additional comments from the public. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I get a Ms. Nelson or Mr. Wallace to address? Just clarify everybody, what's the situation with Harris? The street on Harris, do you want to take that?
Yes.
What it's going to be, just make sure you're wrong.
Yes. The street is very narrow at Harris. My understanding is it was a county street before the city annexed that area. It is very narrow, and the houses are built up very close to the street. If we were to try to widen that street, it would put the road basically right on people's front porches. Kids wouldn't be able to play in the front yard. And the other alternative was to ban parking on the street. And if we did that, that would make it difficult for the residents because they're limited in space as it is for parking their vehicles in their driveways.
Will we end up with connection through to Harris?
It's my understanding.
Yeah, we're, what, one of the salute, just to piggyback on that a little bit, the homes along Harris are very close to the street, and there's very little area to park in front of the house in the street. So, that makes it very difficult to widen that area. So, alternatively, on Glen, it's, the homes are much further away from the street, and the driveways are much more, they're deeper, and they can withstand better parking. So, this is a better solution. So, in addition to the Glen Street connection, the Harris connection is also available for a third connection to the community for first responders and others. And we're open to however we need to open that connection and/or provide T-turnarounds as we work through the TRC process to get to the end solution of that. So, we remain very flexible in that regard.
Is there anything else you wanted to bring, to show council on that?
No, sir, I was trying to get a good.
There's no riding number 11 on your ordinance.
And I, Ms., just when, on, at, I'm sorry, David. The connection off of Glen, it was a cul-de-sac, but we were able to extend that connection through. So, what we're going to do is additional three lots, of which will go in addition to the five lots for the habitats. It's really a win-win-win.
So, just so everyone's clear, this is listed on your agenda as 172-unit subdivision, and it is now 175-unit. Correct those changes. All right, and we're going to open the floor for a public comment.
One question there.
Yes.
Ms. Hocken asked this question about it should be added. What's the feeling of the council?
I think so.
Say what?
I would like to see it added.
Yeah. I think now at the time, you know, if you're going to do it, so have a clear understanding.
Do you want to restate what you'd like added as item 11?
Is the commitment from the petitioner to dedicate a property there for a cul-de-sac, is that what, mind if I change?
Talking about on Harris?
Yeah, Harris is going straight through.
So, he's dedicated.
And that's reflected on the map. It shows it's a straight through connect. So, I don't know if you need a condition of this reflected on the map.
But you stated that you're amenable to a T-turnaround or whatever's necessary.
Or if a connection is not desired, then we're open to a T-connection. But we're open to either. I mean, we're flexible to work through the TRC.
The map shows it connecting. So, that qualifies as a condition, if you state it out or you have it on the plan.
It's on the map.
Are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, and just one more time, that's, when we were here earlier, that was the second connection. Now, it's the third connection.
All right.
So, let me be sure I'm clear on this. The 175-home residential subdivision started out at 172, it's now 175. And the three additional ones are going, Habitat?
No, they are not, they are in addition to the Habitat. The original plan had a cul-de-sac there before it connected to Glen, and which takes a lot more area. And Habitat, everything's preliminary with Habitat, but it looks like there's around going to be five lots that's going to be able to be created. And like I said, we're providing the water and sewer for that and working with Habitat.
Can you explain that with, and use your arrow through those maps if you want to?
Right here. This is the property that's opening up due to this connection here that he's bringing down. We've got these lots right here.
So, was that previously slated for three Habitat?
He's adding three lots to his subdivision. And then we have the Habitat lots on top of that.
Right, I'll let Robin probably speak to it. The Habitat lot was a two-acre partial, and it was in that curve. And it's not served by water and sewer connections at this point. So, I think, I'm not positive, I think it was one lot, but although it was a two-acre that could have been subdivided. But that, once, that, this is just a, this is not a part of this rezoning request. This is just a byproduct, an improvement of it, if you will.
That's what I didn't understand, thank you.
Other questions from council?
I'd like to see, at least put in revisions to item one that we have, as in part two, and the sheets that we have revised. What we have here on, and nothing is on item one, is usually revision.
So, on the agenda item, these have been submitted already, correct?
I think we'd have, it came in at one number, and now we have 175. But I'd like to see everything as a, on this as a revision to the original, with the changes that he's offered already, and the cities have done. This needs to be added directly.
Any other questions, concerns? All right.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this item, yes. Remind folks, when you come up to speak, please state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes, probably three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Ramsour, and I live on Preston Street in the Morgantown community, which is one block over from Glen Street, where the expansion will be taking place. My main concern is the extra traffic. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood that basically have nowhere to play other than their yards, or sometime it spills over into the street. Our streets aren't in the best condition either. I know she mentioned that some of the streets could not be widened, but there has to be some sort of solution to accommodate that additional traffic. The only real main road that we have is Morgantown Road. It actually looks like a city street. The other streets basically look like secondary streets that have asphalt on them, like you would put in your driveway versus concrete. As a teacher, retired teacher, it really concerns me that there's so much traffic in my neighborhood, and people don't always abide by normal speed. You know, if, I can see this being a positive aspect because it may shine some light on our neighborhood if our neighborhood could work in addition to Brassfield. Because there's issues in our neighborhood that, such as he said, the streets. When I've launched streetlights, it's kind of a dark neighborhood. Myself, I have due power, put a streetlight in my yard so that my yard is not pitch black when I get home. But everybody hasn't done that. If we could get speed bumps to deter the speeding, you know, if we could get some additional police presence. We never see B P D unless something happens after we've read about it in the Times News. Several of my neighbors have talked to me about the fact that they have called. They were told that they would send a car out, but no one ever came, about instances that are occurring in our neighborhood. Mr. Fossett and I have spoken previously about a community watch. That's hard to get developed because we have a lot of property owners, not the ones that you see here, who are afraid of retaliation because of the crime in our neighborhood. And I just feel like opening up Glen Street might spill some of our problems into a new and upcoming community. Basically, I'm just concerned about the extra traffic and whether or not we will be able to accommodate it. I looked at that map earlier today, and from Glen Street, they can access, we only have two entrances and exits in Morgantown. One's on this side, one's on that side. From Glen, they could take Glen to Foster, Morgantown Road to Sharp Road. Yeah, they could take Glen, turn on Austin, come down my street, Preston, take Foster, Morgantown. It's a lot of options to get in and out. Mr. Crawford?
Wallace.
Wallace. Mr. Wallace. He and I were talking about fire, police, and E M T. access. Now, that's one thing that I'm for with this opening, if it'll make it easier, because I have had to have the fire department and the E M Ts at my house to take me to the hospital several occasions. And they're kind of confused as to how to get out of Morgantown. So, if they would have an opener that could just shoot me straight to Lake Side to Sharp Road, and maybe the back way to the hospital, you know, for that. But I'm just very concerned about the fact that our roads may not be able to accommodate additional traffic. And at our meeting, it was 172. Tonight, they're saying 175. Just think of each household has two cars. Just think of the number of traffic that could be funneled through as a shortcut through Morgantown so that they don't have to go all the way around just to get to a main road. So, I hope you keep that in consideration when you guys make your vote on this particular issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramsour.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Karen Ogden, and I live at 518 Creekview in Brassfield Meadows. My concern is, as you were saying, the kids not having a place to play. I don't know if this area or this project is going to have some type of community center or some playground or something like that for the kids. But it just seems to me like every time a division or something comes up, that important part, you know, investing in the future of our kids, needs to be considered. We need something for the kids. If they cannot play on a playground, they have to play in the street or in their front yard, you are proposing to take some of their land or you can't take the land to widen the streets, something like that, consider that when you're having these multimillion-dollar communities being developed. I don't see what the issue would be in trying to put that in part of the planning so that the kids can have a safe environment to play in. You don't want a fire truck to come down the street and kids out in the street and somebody get hit, and then what's going to happen? I mean, this may be extreme, but these are things that are never considered. I go to other cities, and you see they have communities like such, and they have a little area for the kids to play in. It's not a lot to ask for our kids, but I think we need to consider that because they are our future. And if we're not, if we're so busy planning and trying to develop areas, but then not really considering that, to try to bring families into these areas with kids and have a safe environment. I understand police, but yeah, we want that protection. I don't know anything about Morgantown because I live in Brassfield. So, now, it's like if you're saying that crime or things like that, that's such, that's causing me a concern because I feel safe in my neighborhood. Been there since '03 and never had an issue, and hopefully I never will. But with that being said, you know, we just want these communities in our areas to be more like some of these other extravagant areas, to have an area, to have a community center, playground, whatever it can be. You know, you take some of those houses and make a community center or an area for safe haven for kids as needs to be, so that they won't have to play in the streets and things as such. It's not a lot to ask for, but something just to consider in your planning. Because you go to other neighborhoods, and it's nice to see those things in those neighborhoods. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogden.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Robin Wintringham. I live at 1326 Ridgecrest Avenue. And I'm here tonight representing the Ministry of Habitat for Humanity. I'd like to speak in favor of this development for a couple of reasons. For one, as you all know, we're developing Richmond Hill, very close by, within a mile, mile and a half or so, which will have access to primary health care, fitness, childcare, and other nice amenities for North Borough. and other nice amenities for North Burlington. And by having the access across Glen Street, all of these neighbors will have a way to get there, which is great. Also, Mr. Wallace offered, when we talked about running a temporary road or a permanent road, he offered to go ahead and extend water and sewer, which is, you know, is expensive, and it'll be a savings to us. It'll make it simpler for us to provide five more families with affordable homes, that they, of course, themselves will build. You know how Habitat works, they'll invest. We also know that goods and services follow disposable income, and building in more income, personal income in that area, to me, will be an asset to everyone who lives in that community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else on this side of the room that would like to speak? Do I hear a motion regarding the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Are there any questions from council on any items raised, or to Mr. Wallace, or do I hear a motion?
I've got some questions here. Not to Mr. Wallace, but to, to residents of Morgantown, Ms. Ramsor, I know you well. Did anyone from the police department ever contact you about starting a neighborhood watch? I know we had one there once.
We tried to get a community watch together, but just like I told you, it's kind of hard, because people are afraid of retaliation. There's a lot going, going on in Morgantown that the BPD needs to be aware of, not when it happens, so we can be proactive before it happens. The people just, we can't seem to get them together. This little group you see around me, these are the main people, who we're ready enough. I turned into Morgantown Road the other day, and it looks like somebody has even taken down a sign from where we used to have a community watch years ago. So does that mean we don't have community watch anymore, that someone in the neighborhood knocked the sign down? Who knows? But we would love to get our community watch started, so that we can deter some of this crime that's occurring mainly in the rental property. The homeowners are not your problem. It's the rental properties that are high in crime.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think maybe my friend Chief, we can do this, can't we?
Yes, sir. You, you know, there was a comment made a few weeks ago about this, and so Lieutenant Doc Majors is in charge of this program. He's identified all the homes in Morgantown. We've already visited 40 of them. We will hit every single home, it's all called a community survey that we're doing. He's pulled the data. Within the last six months, we've had 400 and some calls, so about, about 80 calls for service a month, which have generated 10 or less police reports for actual crimes per month in Morgantown neighborhood. So we're there often, but maybe not when people see us being there, but I, you know, we've got GPS trackers on every car. If you want to come into the police station or meet with Lieutenant Majors, we'll show you the data of what cars go where and how often. We are present, maybe not as tuned in as we could or should be, but we're committed to changing that. The community survey is the first piece of that. I'll certainly put on his radar to make sure that we're talking about a block watch, a neighborhood watch. It just requires a certain number of people to be involved. It's not about the sign, it's about the knowledge and the interaction with the police department. So we're committed to those things.
And people are committed to get the neighborhood back.
I promise you, we're going to work with you for that.
And could you also add that we get to know our officers that's going to sign, because in the past, we knew our officers. They would get out of the car, come on the front porch, sit with you, talk with you. We knew them by name, so it would be great to have that again, you know?
We'll, we'll do that, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I know another concern raised was regarding the lighting, and on the current budget, council's evaluating upgrading lights across the community to brighter LED lights, and including filling a number of holes where we, we need streetlights between existing streetlights. I'm the manager, I don't know, if you want to briefly touch on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, to, to address the question, we, in this year's budget, we have, we're going to go completely LED with our streetlights in all residential areas throughout the city, and so by this time next year, that project should be complete. So we'll start working on those in coordination with Duke to get that completed, and then following budget, we'll work on our commercial areas and our major thoroughfares. But we're going to do the residential areas first, partially in response to concerns we've heard from, from folks just like you. We'll also, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and do a, we'll have our engineering department go ahead and do a quick analysis of this area. We've been trying to fill the gaps since last summer, and the police department has given us 50 different locations to add lights around the city, and we've been adding those where they have areas that are dark. But we'll, we'll take a special look at the area we've talked about this evening, and if something needs to be added, we'll work with Duke to have that, have that taken care of.
And, and let me say this, we'll, we'll try to sit in charge with their part, and we ask the neighborhood to do their part as well.
Willing to do it. Now, give as many people as I can?
I know you will.
You know I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I want to speak to the, the traffic piece of this, because I, we can't tell you that it's not going to create more traffic, because it will. But I think what I'm impressed with in this new plan is that there are more ways for people to get out of this neighborhood. So it's not one street that's taking all of the traffic. You've got three streets, and people won't get us backed up as a result. So I think that that recommends this plan better than the one we had before, which I think would have made it difficult, especially on Harris Street with too many cars. So I think it's, it's more shared now, I think is a good idea.
Other questions or comments from council? Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
I believe that we approve the rezoning.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion as laid out to approve the zoning? All those in favor of approving?
Yes.
Very advised, if you say, with the added conditions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, with the, with the revised conditions for this particular item.
All those in favor of approving zoning of Brassfield, including the revisions as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you, Mr. Wallace, for your time and your commitment to the community.
I'll make a motion, statement of consistency.
Thank you.
The City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the city of Burlington 's comprehensive land use plan, that this item is greenable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects a change in land use patterns in the area.
Second.
All those in favor of the statement of consistency, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Statement of consistency is approved. Thank you, citizens, who provided input on that project. We appreciate your participation. This moves us to item two on unfinished business. City Council will consider adopting a resolution in support of an application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division for a building reuse grant in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to support the interior buildout of the restaurant and brewery located 302 South Main Street, Burlington, North Carolina, continued from April 18, 2017, City Council meeting. Councilmember Hikes has been asked to be recused from this meeting. She'll be invited back in once this agenda item is complete. And this is a continuation of that previous item from April 18. At this time, council recognizes Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. As stated by the mayor, here again on our continued discussion for the resolution in support of the Burlington Beer Works grant, and would certainly answer any questions additionally that you may have regarding this request at this time.
Just a reminder, the public hearing for this item was held and closed. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I don't have any questions. I think we pretty well worked it over at the last meeting.
Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
Move.
Second.
The motion before council is to approve the building reuse grant. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. Please, Kathy back in.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of public hearings scheduled for this evening. Item three on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting the Brassfield Meadows Annexation Ordinance to be effective May 2, 2017, at 11:59 PM. At this time, council recognizes Daniel Schaffner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you this evening, the first item of public hearings is the annexation petition for Brassfield Meadows. Mr. Scott Wallace and Keystone Holmes are the petitioner, and this relates back to the rezoning which you approved just a few minutes ago. This annexation petition does meet all statutory requirements for voluntary annexation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have as well.
Any questions from council regarding this annexation? This is a public hearing. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this annexation? Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any questions or a motion on this ordinance?
Make a motion if we adopt the annexation ordinance as written.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting this annexation ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Annexation ordinance has been adopted. Item four on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting Buck Hill Village Apartments Annexation Ordinance to be effective May 2, 2017, at 11:59 PM. At this time, council recognizes again Daniel Schaffner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, you have before you a request for annexation. This was for the Buck Hill Village Apartments, which you approved the rezoning, I believe, the last meeting or earlier in April. And this will also make the Fire Station 6 contiguous to the other parts of the city limits as well, which it's always good to close the gaps when possible. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this annexation this evening.
Any questions from council regarding this annexation? This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this annexation ordinance?
We adopt the annexation ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the annexation ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Annexation ordinance is adopted. This moves us to item five. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting the Copeland Fabrics Annexation Ordinance to be effective May 2, 2017, at 11:59 PM. At this time, council recognizes Daniel Schaffner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Your third annexation request tonight is from Copeland Fabrics, and this would be a satellite annexation just northeast of the existing city limits along the Hall River. This will actually put the city lim, the city limits for the first time north of the Hall River for Burlington. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them regarding this annexation request, and it meets all statutory requirements for satellite annexation as well.
Any questions from council regarding this annexation?
We have water and sewer run all the way down Graham Hope Dale and all the way down Apple Street.
In most places, yes, sir. Some of the sewer might be hit or miss along Graham Hope Dale outside the city limits, and a lot of that was a CDBG grant money. The county actually had some involvement installing those back around 2000 in the late 90s.
But we do go to the bridge on Apple Street side, or just about, to Graham Hope Dale and Apple Street.
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak from this side of the room? Anyone from this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this annexation ordinance?
Both that we adopt the annexation ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting this annexation ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Annexation ordinance is adopted. This moves us to item six on our agenda. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting an ordinance designating the May Hosery Mill property located at 612 South Main Street, a local historic landmark. At this time, council recognizes Daniel Schaffner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a request to designate the May Hosery Mill a local historic landmark. I'll give you a brief synopsis of the historic landmarks in the city. This would only be the fourth one. This is not something that's done frequently or often, but it is reserved for special significant structures and/or other features of the city. For instance, the three existing landmarks are the Carousel at City Park, the Historic Depot over dead end of Main Street and Front Street, and then a house located on East Davis Street, just off of Meathen Street. And what we have before you tonight is Mr. Herb Coleman is also here to speak on behalf of this designation request, along with the current owners of the mill. I believe Mr. Chad Porterfield is also in attendance as well to represent the current ownership, and this is tied to the future apartment development of the May Hosery Mill as well, as an economic development tool. Local landmark designations are frequently used as an economic tool for development as well, due to the 50% tax deferral that is eligible on these properties once they are designated.
Any questions for Mr. Schaffner? Otherwise, Mr. Coleman like to issue any comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you have any comments, or would you like to speak on this moment?
If you'd like me to shore up, I don't really have anything to take delivery.
Any clarification? Okay. All right.
I have just a few pictures. If you'd like to see them, I'll scroll through them quickly of the mill in its current condition. And again, I'll just add one other item. Any exterior renovations that would be made to this facility or any historic landmark also have to go before the Historic Preservation Commission for approval, so there is a layer of preservation and protection on these historic properties.
What was the original year of construction of the mill?
The period of significance is 1929.
Any questions from council? Otherwise, this is a public hearing. Anyone on this side of the room would like to speak? Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any questions or do I hear a motion on this agenda item?
Make a motion if we adopt the ordinance as requested.
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the historic designation on the May Hosery property, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. We have one item of new business. City Council will consider a request allowing the Blend &amp; Co Coffee Shop permission to hold a craft fair event in a portion of city parking lot number one, at the corner of Front Street and Spring Street, on May 13, 2017, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM, contingent upon meeting all requirements of the City of Burlington's special event permit application. At this time, council recognizes the blend owner, Holly Treadwell. And the organizer, Carrie Griffin.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are here to chat with you a little bit about what we're excited to do with the Front Street Market, the first Front Street Market, and we really want to provide an environment for local makers and artisans to sell goods to the community in downtown Burlington. We're excited about creating and fostering a strong culture in downtown Burlington, and we have already submitted the application and also spoke with the lease owners of the Farmer's Market, and they have approved and are okay with us using the lot on that specific day.
We believe the lot will create a good connection between businesses downtown and the artisans coming, to intermingle the market with existing businesses as well.
Excellent. Any questions from council regarding this item? All right. Do I hear a motion from council?
Both that we approve, request contingent upon meeting all insurance and special event permit application requirements.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving this permit request, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public comments signed up for this evening. This moves us to City Council comments. Do I hear any comments from City Council?
I've got one, Mayor.
Yeah?
I serve as our representative on the Freedom and Triad Council, and throughout the year, we have an opportunity to spotlight various cities throughout the area that the, that the council serves, and a couple of weeks ago, it was a future Burlington Day, so I wanted to give a little shout out to Rachel and, and her PowerPoint and slideshow talents, and City Manager Harden Watkins was there as well, and we sort of tag teamed and did a three-peat presentation on it that was most impressive. I was even impressed myself. It was the best. It was the best 15 minutes Burlington's ever had. We put a lot into 15 minutes, but I know a lot of work went into that. And obviously, representing council and the city and our region on that is very special to me, so to have the opportunity to spend 15 minutes and do that and to have the expertise that they provided was well appreciated. So, thank you, guys.
I commend you. I spoke in life at Elon about Burlington. They gave me two hours, and I barely fit into two hours, so I'm impressed that you were able to fit into 15 minutes.
It took three of us.
There's a lot of good things happening here in the community. I appreciate you sharing that. Any other items from council?
There's a lot going on in the community. I attended something this morning called Engage Aliments, which was a spirit of entrepreneurialism that's emerging in our community. And it was quite a good group of people, as what there was at the first meeting, and lots of young people, which is always inspiring. So, we need to stay tuned and see what they're going to be coming up with, on people who are interested in starting small businesses.
I'd like to add on to that, that the governor was here yesterday recognizing Small Business Week and recognizing the impact that the Main Street Solution Fund has had on company shops market and our downtown. There's a couple of items coming up in the next few weeks that I'd like to mention. Active City Streets will be happening this weekend on May 5, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This is one of our largest downtown festivals, and so we hope that folks will come out and attend. Also, Fourth Fridays kicks back into gear for the season. We're excited for that at the end of the month on May 26. You can find out more information at btowneventsnc.com. And thank you, everyone, who attended the Long in Burlington program last week. That was our second of the series, and we'll be holding the next one on July 26, right here at City Hall, from 6 to 8 PM. And then, lastly, Link Transit is offering all-day fares now per council's approval, so folks can ask for a $4 all-day pass when they board the bus. That's all I have. Any other items from council? Manager, any comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening.